Breaking in music. Hello, welcome to an emergency session of the Listen to This Bull show. I've got Clint Moore with Clint and company.
PA.
PA.
That's correct.
Not a public adjuster, a public attorney?
Just an attorney.
Private attorney.
Yeah, I'm a private attorney.
I don't know. Is it private?
Professional Association. Just for tax purposes.
Okay. Now I know we are here. We're going to talk about the special session bills that passed in Florida at the end of last month and go through all the goodies and the baddies, I guess you'd say that about that bill. If you guys end up having any questions, you're doing any work in Florida, you have any questions on how this goes, put the questions in the comments, but right after this intro, we'll get started. I'm really glad we have a disclaimer. We've got our names backwards on here, though. But that's okay. All right. So we've got two different bills. There is the SB two D and the SB four D. And one of them is longer and has more to do with what a typical policyholder would have to deal with than the other. So I think that's two D. Two D has most of the stuff in it.
You're right. You're right. Two D is the the more significant legislation.
So let's talk about four D real quick so we can just knock it out.
Sure. All right. So Senate Bill four D does two things. There are some rules related to condo regulations that were enacted in response to the surside incident. But the the portion that we're going to be more concerned about here is the portion that modifies the Florida building code related to roofs and their repair replacement. Prior to this, you were, if a roof was damaged with at least 25%, then that roof needed to be replaced according to the building code fully. Since this enactment now, if your if your roof is compliant with at least the 2007 building code or advanced, any anything between or anything after 25% is going to need to be repaired. Just just that section according to the the new building code.
So that would mean that any any building code upgrades would only have to be performed on the area of that roof section that is damaged as long as it is more than 25% of that roof section that's damaged. So repair of less than 25% wouldn't mean that it needed to be brought up to code. But even if it is, it's just the area of that, which in reality is an impossibility. It's impossible. So if you're talking about all the same roof section and having to bring any portion up to of it up to code, you're going to be doing a lot of things that tie into the rest of the portions of that roof section that are connected. So you're going to end up replacing a significant significantly larger amount of it anyway. And this still doesn't preclude any repairability concerns or compatibility concerns. It still doesn't preclude the policy from paying for a like kind of quality or similar construction or whatever it does say. So I honestly don't think it's going to make that much difference.
Nope, there there definitely could be slightly more repairs to roofs now. But at the end of the day, like you were saying, adjusters will have their arguments for compatibility, repairability and matching. And those are those are laws that are incorporated into the insurance contract.
Yeah. So I don't think it's going to make that much difference, other than the fact that it's just going to be a little bit harder argument for everyone. So public adjusters, attorneys, you've you've got a little bit more work on your hands. Don't worry. Just charge more, I guess.
I mean, inflation, right?
Yeah. All right. So.
So that's four D.
I think that is. The rest of four D has to do with requirements for HOA and condo units that are along the beach. We will do another video on that separately, or at least I will. I don't know if you really want to get into that. But we'll do one of those separately on the rest of that bill. That's the only part of the bill that affects the majority of policyholders. So we're going to switch over to the other bill.
All right.
Two D SB two D. You can find these things on Google, by the way, if you just search for Florida SB is in Sierra Bravo, two D is two Delta.
Correct. Yep. You can find them. The Florida Senate and legislature have websites that'll have PDF versions and website versions.
Yeah. So in this one, we've got a lot to talk about. In the the beginning of this has a whole new reinsurance plan set up.
Yes, the RAP program.
Yeah.
It's as it's known.
Insurers need to rap.
Yeah.
About their losses to the to the OIR now.
I may have missed that subsection of the bill. You know, admittedly.
Might have been implied. I think it was implied.
Okay, so RAP program is the reinsurance to assist policyholders. It is a $2 billion program that is designed to help give some relief to policyholders.
And the way it's written, it's it's a little bit ambiguous about that $2 million. It it almost looks like it could be $2 million per insured or insurer. But it's it's $2 million that is for the entire program, $2 billion for the entire program. B. But if they if the insurer needs to request some of those funds, they are allowed to have a payout of up to $2 billion. And it seems like that could be each. So it almost sounds like it might be $2 billion each per insurer as participating in that. And they become a RAP insurer if they participate in it.
Correct.
Right. Which is very west side of.
The the biggest thing for policyholders here is that if you are a participating character or a carrier, what you will have to do this year is reduce your premiums or give a credit by June 30th of this this month. If you already have private reinsurance as a carrier and you delay your participation to next year, those rates don't have to be reduced until May 2023.
So we might actually see some insurance rates reduced suddenly.
Yeah.
You're saying.
For exactly for.
It doesn't say by how much, though.
It does not say how much.
Five dollars.
Unfortunately, technically, I guess that would comply with the statute, even though it wouldn't really, you know, be the intent behind it.
Well. I'm not going to say it.
How often do they comply with their intent?
Right. Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. And and yeah. This is a very serious emergency session, though. I need to be more serious and not talk shit. So outside of that RAP fund, which really won't make that much difference on how the claims are handled unless there is a major hurricane event that occurs, a hurricane event is is when the funds for the RAP, the RAP funds would become available as long as it is deemed required. So within 60 days after the event that has occurred, the carrier would have to submit, a RAP insurer would have to submit some documentation showing that is necessary for them to receive those funds. So within that first 60 days after an event, I wonder if during that first 60 days, they pay out a crap ton of money on purpose, they pay everything in order to show that they definitely need access to those funds. Why wouldn't they?
Well, the the way that I understand, I know that you'd said it may be $2 billion per insurer. But they've also got a section in there that says that it's a pro rata from that $2 billion per that insurers, you know, how much they're actually using of their reinsurance.
Sure.
So, yeah, I I think that, you know, if they only have a small portion.
Billion, you know, most hurricanes cause a lot more than $2 billion worth of damage. So.
Yeah.
But it's only supposed to be 90% of their outgoing that is covered by that reinsurance anyway.
That's correct. And then 10% of their loss adjustment expenses, too.
Yeah. Well, all right. All right. Should we talk about anything more with the rap? Is anybody having questions about the rap system? Doubtful systems are going to crash causing delay. That's entirely possible. 60. They'd have to show that they needed it within 60 days. But they'd have to do that with projection models, I would assume, and not actually how much they're paying out. So I think Frederick must be right. He's probably right on that.
Probably.
Yeah. Yeah. Good call, Frederick. I didn't think about that. Okay.
What's next?
Now we've got the fun things that have to do with, well, some of this is for advertisement for contractors.
Sure. You want to do that?
Yeah, let's do that one next.
All right. I know this is a big one. So when we're talking about solicitation, I know last year, some of you are probably familiar with SB 76. That law was enjoined by a federal judge, and so it is no longer being enforced. This.
What does enjoined mean?
Oh, enjoined means that it's basically it cannot be enforced. A federal judge looked at it and they said, we're going to, we're going to put this on pause as far as the enforcement until this lawsuit can progress. However, I think that that lawsuit is now moot with this new law. And what they did was they tried to fix some of the problems with that. Essentially, you are allowed now to communicate to a policyholder or consumer as a contractor or as a public adjuster to with a written or electronic communication that does encourage them to make an insurance claim for roof damage, right? This this applies to roof damage claims only. Provided that the notice says three things and that the first one is that the consumer is responsible for the payment of any deductible. The second thing is that it is insurance fraud punishable as a third degree felony. If a contractor pays or waives a consumer's deductible. And then last, it's insurance fraud and punishable as a third degree felony. If you file an insurance claim with any false, misleading or fraudulent information that is based upon.
Now, there is a weird little caveat in this. I don't even know if I want to say it on here in case the defense counsel hears this, but it says it's punishable a felony of a third degree, like you said, for a contractor knowingly or willfully and with intent to injure, defraud or deceive, pay, waive or rebate. All are part of an insured insurance deductible. With intent to injure, defraud or deceive.
So I mean, I I think that that's going to go to your intent. I mean, if 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 the carrier accused someone of providing an estimate that was fraudulent, that person would have a defense to say, hey, look, I in good faith prepared this based on, you know, my training and experience and what I thought, you know, that this was a legitimate loss.
It doesn't name the party that they have the intent to injure, defraud or deceive. I would assume they mean the insurer. But there's an and there, the contractor must knowingly and willfully and with the intent to injure, defraud or deceive, pay, waive or rebate, all are part of the insurance premium applicable to payment to the contractor for repairs to a property covered by a property insurance policy. So I think that if if someone were to get in trouble for it, and I'm not an attorney, and I forgot to make that disclaimer, I'm not an attorney, I'm reading a law and I'm trying to interpret it as a layman. How about that? This guy's an attorney. You can talk to him. They would have to prove that there was an intent to injure, defraud or deceive, I think.
Yeah. And that's going to be hard to do to get into somebody's head to prove why they were, you know, making such a statement. You know, don't put on paper that you're trying to, you know, fraudulently deceive someone. That's a good tip for to start.
Yeah, I agree.
I also wanted to mention too that the warnings that that you have to include in there need to be in font that's at least as big as the the other largest font in the in the advertisement. So it can't be. Oh, half as large as.
At least half as large, but a minimum of.
Okay, gotcha. That's what it was.
So there is there's part of this that says it's punishable as a felony of the third degree to intentionally file an insurance claim containing any false, incomplete or misleading information. So this is a section about contractors filing claims. But as far as I understand, it's illegal for a contractor to file a claim anyway on behalf of a third party. If they're filing a a claim on their own insurance, that'd be one thing. So it's insurance fraud punishable as a felony of the third degree to intentionally file an insurance claim that contains any false, incomplete or misleading information. So if if you were, as a public adjuster or an attorney, file a claim with a policyholder that the policyholder tells you one thing, you say, hey, let's uh, let's not say that to the insurance company, then you could potentially be accused of insurance fraud punishable with a third degree felony. What is a third degree felony?
So in Florida, there's third, second and first degree felonies. They're they're the only difference is how they're punishable. So a third degree felony is punishable by five years in prison, a second degree is 15 and a third is 30.
Okay, so third degree.
Five years.
It's not like a burn where first degree burn is not so bad. It's the opposite. First degree is terrible. Third degree is, oh, five years is still terrible. So.
Yeah, I don't want to do five years in prison.
Yeah, I mean, but if you're going to do some time in prison, I feel like you could get a lot of muscle mass in five years.
I might have to pass my window to add bulk. I don't know.
All right. That is the only thing that is specific to contractors in this.
Yes.
Is that right?
I well, yeah, I believe so. I mean, there's some stuff related to the roof deductibles and underwriting that are going to be part and parcel.
Sure, because they have to collect deductibles. Okay. All right. So where where should we go next? Should we skip to that or should we start talking about? I don't think we should get to the breach of of contract stuff yet. Let's skip over to that other section then.
All right.
And come back to breach of contract.
So let's stick in with roofs, then the roof deductible portion of this bill. So now carriers are going to be allowed to offer separate roof deductibles in the policy. They are limited to at least to 2% of the coverage A limit or 50% of the replacement cost value of the roof. They're also optional. Policyholders do not have to accept this. But if they do, then they are, the carrier must provide an actuarially sound premium credit or discount. So there are some situations too where this does not apply, which are very important. It doesn't apply in a total loss. It does not apply to a hurricane roof loss. It does not apply to like a tree fall or other hazards damage that damages the roof and punctures the roof decking.
I want to pause on that one because it uses the word hazard and that is not the same thing as apparel. All right. A hazard is something that increases the risk surrounding the property. So it specifies tree fall or other hazard. Tree fall is a perfect example of a hazard. If you've got a lot of trees surrounding your property, those trees increase the the hazard of that risk. The risk is the property. So a lot of trees create more hazard. That's a hazard because it's it's something that is part of the property with its ability to have additional losses because of the way the the property is is built or something along those lines. Not the same thing as apparel. So if giant ass hail came through and put a hole in the roof, that doesn't apply. So this says it doesn't apply to a roof loss resulting from a tree fall or other hazard that damages the roof and punctures the roof deck. That's only going to be the stuff that is considered a hazard. It's a very different thing.
Good point there. Another situation that it won't apply in is if the roof is damaged and it's going to be 50% or less to repair. The roof deductible will not apply in that case. And, you know, these deductibles are obviously pretty high. I mean, half of the replacement costs were 2% of coverage A. Those are big numbers.
Whichever is less, though, which is important to note. But that is a scary situation. Imagine you're a PA and you file a claim on a roof and you say that the roof is $100,000 to replace. And so 50% of $100,000 is $50,000. If the carrier says no, it's $30,000 to replace. And now you have a difference of amount of loss. For every dollar that you get more that's approved, that's 50 cents that the policyholder has to pay in deductible. So the more you get approved, the larger their out of pocket expense becomes. At what point are you not doing a service for your client anymore? So that 2% being lesser, 2% of the policy limits might might come into play a little bit more often. And and I think that that could end up being a really interesting and scary way that things happen because it directly contradicts contingency fee type situations for for public adjusters.
Yep. They are, like I said, they're optional. The policyholder is entitled to get notice that the carrier is either going to renew their policy with a roof deductible now or issue them one with one. And they're entitled to know what amount they are getting in discount for accepting that roof deductible. Only other thing I think that there is to know about this is if they are applying a roof deductible, no other deductible in the policy can apply. So I mean, that that's huge. I'm not trying to double dip on you.
That can be beneficial. Yeah, I you there the circumstances that it wouldn't apply might actually become a little bit more of the argument than anything else. If it's a if it's a hurricane, if it's a hazard that causes a hole, if it's less than 50% of the roof being replaced, if it's not RCV coverage. So if they end up getting an RPS schedule in at some point, if that ends up occurring, then you'll have something. Now, if you if they do have this option available to you, they have to also give you the option to opt out with a signature. So if you don't get the option to opt out of that with the renewal that has the rate reduction and the and the roof deductible language in there, if they don't give you the option to opt out, there might be other stuff to do and you should call Clint. Could you explain proof of loss a bit? You know what? Glad she brought that up because there's actually some interesting stuff about that in here.
Yes, on the the claims handling changes.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
That's before, though.
I'm not sure where it is in in the bill, but basically what what this is saying, and we should be clear. This bill went into effect on May 26, 2022, unless specified otherwise in the bill. And this section that we're about to talk about, the the carrier's duties after a loss doesn't come into effect until January 1st of 2023. So just be aware of that as we discuss these changes. But um, there are some new changes for for carrier claims handling. After an insurer submits a proof of loss, after the proof of loss is submitted, the carrier has 14 days to begin their investigation of the loss and 45 days to inspect, inspect the property unless it's a hurricane claim. Then they have that that 45 day limit doesn't apply.
So I got a question for you.
Yes.
This says within 14 days in one section and other timeframes as well, after an insurer receives proof of loss statements. Is that different from receiving a signed sworn proof of loss?
I don't believe so. I think it's just a different way of of stating the same thing, or at least that's what I would argue if I if I got called on that. Do you know something that I don't?
I I like semantics, that's all.
I know you do.
A lost proof of loss statement, if you if you were to take that term because they didn't define it in this either. So they didn't say as a part of the subsection, the term proof of loss means blah. It just says after insurer receive proof of loss statements. So is that any evidence about your loss? Could could an estimate, could photos be considered proof of loss statements?
I mean, I think that you could make that argument, but I think for best practices, I mean, we a sworn proof of loss, a proof of loss is is a, you know, an identifiable document that we know is a part of an insurance claim. It has, you know.
Insurance policies all very clearly indicate a sworn proof, though, right?
That's correct. And it doesn't actually say, use those words in the bill.
It doesn't.
Necessarily. So like I said, there there could be some, you know, creative lawyering or or adjust, you know, you know.
If the if these timeframes are going to be triggered at all for anything other than the submittal of a sworn proof of loss signed by the policyholder with it with all the things that are attached and everything.
I think, you know, because let's say, you know, they're not, they're not, if you have a, if you have a loss, you can go and you can document everything ahead of time and then make your claim with all the documentation presented to the carrier. But obviously, you're not going to have a proof of loss form then because they haven't sent it to you. So I I do understand sort of your 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 point there, which is that you're going to have a loss. You're going to have to request the proof of loss and then submit it before these these timeframes even begin to to start.
I I think what's got me is the fact that it's plural. It says statements. It doesn't say a proof of loss.
So it could be, you know, plural, like multiple possibilities that could satisfy that is what you're thinking?
Possibly. I mean, it says it again down here, proof of loss statements. It says the insurer must conduct any such physical inspection within 45 days after its receipt of the proof of loss statements.
Probably a poorly worded, you know, portion of this bill. Like I said, it it will get litigated. It will get, you know, ironed out as to what that means, I'd imagine. But again, if you're being safe, if you're being best practices.
Yeah.
Submit the swarm proof.
I I would definitely agree with you there. There's no reason to challenge these things and just do crap where your client's going to suffer because they're waiting longer to get coverages just because you want to challenge something like this. It's an interesting statement and I feel like policyholders that don't have a public adjuster or an attorney may have some relief as a result of this language down the road. But it would be better to have the sworn proof of loss submitted, even if the policy says upon a request in there, just because these trigger timelines would be very beneficial to a policy.
Yep. Yeah. And I mean, I for attorneys out there, if you're or or adjusters too. I mean, if you're sending out your letter of representation, I don't think there's anything wrong with going ahead and saying, hey, look, send me a a proof of loss form so we can get that to you. And another portion, which we'll get to in just a second, says, go ahead and request a copy of their estimate as soon as it is completed. Because the other, another portion here that's a new law is the once, once a claim is assigned to an adjuster, that carrier has seven days in order to inform the policyholder that they have the right to request an estimate from the carrier. And then, of course, once the policyholder makes that request, the carrier has seven days to provide it or if it's not complete yet, seven days to provide it after completion. And that's why I say when you send your initial thing, a letter of representation, ask for the proof of loss, ask for a copy of the estimate within seven days of completion so that they're on notice and there's no delay once that occurs.
Yeah, request that information right away. Within seven days after the insurer's assignment of an adjuster on the claim, the insurer must notify the policyholder that he or she may request a copy. So the insurer within seven days just have to tell them that they can request. Make the request. Could you imagine? And it says, and I I think this is interesting as part of that, again, the semantics of it. He or she may request a copy of any detailed estimate of the amount of loss generated by an insurer's adjuster, not the assigned adjuster. So if they assign an adjuster to a claim within seven days, the the insurer must notify that they can request a copy of the detailed estimate that was generated by some adjuster at the insurer. It doesn't have to be that one. So it's that's unfortunate. I was really hoping that it would be specifically the adjuster that is assigned or whoever does the inspection, because that would be rather interesting to find out what that was, what was submitted to the carrier because it had to be theirs.
Yep.
But it could be something the carrier writes otherwise. I don't think the lawmakers intended that to be that way. They probably intended it to be whatever that person that was assigned wrote. And insurers adjuster.
Yeah, that seems like the purpose is get the get the policyholder the information about their loss that the carrier collected at this point, not hire, you know, a whole bunch of people so that you can pick and choose what estimate you want to show to the policyholder. That that defeats the purpose.
Then it says the insurer must send any such detailed estimate to the publisher within the latter of seven days after the insurer received a request or seven days after the detailed estimate, the amount of loss is completed. So what if they don't complete that in any real time?
Well, if they don't, I would say that the policyholder could argue that they've waived that 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 ability and they, you know, if all their conditions precedent were were met to filing suit, then they could go ahead and file suit even without the carrier inspecting the property at that point.
Do you think that that would be considered a breach of contract?
For the for the care or for the policyholder to do that?
If the carrier were to not provide the detailed estimate.
No. This section is a part of the prompt payment statute in Florida, which if you go through it all, at the end of it, unfortunately, it says that violation of the code is a is a breach of the code, but it's doesn't create a private right of action. So you wouldn't be able to just say, hey, they didn't inspect this within 45 days. Therefore, they breached the contract. This is not technically a term of the contract and it specifically says in there that. a term of the contract and it specifically says in there that you don't have a private right of action, unfortunately. It's it's good, good, good evidence for a jury, though. A jury is not going to like to hear that the carriers are breaching their duties under the law, you know, to get this stuff done.
Yeah. We'll come back to the breach of contract issue. There's a few people that have. You're welcome, Scott. It is the proof of loss they are referring to. In my opinion, it's a sworn statement. They're probably meaning to have it that way, but it does make it plural. I'm just saying. But, you know, there's there's the spirit of the law and the way it's actually written, and that's why lawyers exist, so that they could challenge a lot of that semantics and stuff. Let's let's talk about the fifteen year old issue for roofs.
Okay, sure. So this is a portion of the bill that said, you know, basically, quick background, in Florida, there were a lot of carriers that were just saying, hey, look, your roof is older than ten years. We're we're not, we're not renewing your policy or issuing you a policy unless you replace it out of pocket. So in response, the legislature has come up with two new rules. If your house or your your roof, rather, is less than fifteen years old, a carrier cannot refuse to renew or issue a policy based solely on the age of the roof. Okay, that's that's the first part.
Just have to come up with a different reason.
Yeah, I, you know, that that's my, you know, fear is that word solely right there. I mean, and essentially, you're just saying of age plus another reason, you know, and and that's what you're essentially saying. So the carrier could say, well, we're not deny, we're not refusing to issue it because it's a a fifteen or a fourteen year old roof. It's a fourteen year old roof with prior damage, with marring that was constructed improperly or something like that. Just some other reason will give them the ability to to do that.
But if it's fifteen years old or older.
So and I and I'm going to make the same kind of argument with this one, but yeah, the the second portion of this is if it's fifteen years or older, the carrier must allow the policyholder to have an inspection done on the roof. And if the roof inspection appines that the roof has at least five years of useful life left, then the carrier, again, cannot refuse to not renew or issue based solely on the on the roof's age, that that solely issue language is still in that is still in that portion of the bill. So unfortunately, I think that that the same concern applies there.
I I don't like some of the languages in this portion of it because it the carrier must allow the insured to have this inspection. The insured, the policyholder has to pay for it unless they determine that it is something that has five years' life left or more. But the the key here is that it has to be performed by an authorized inspector. And an authorized inspector is a list of types of people that the insurer selects. So the carrier gets to decide who these authorized people are. And it's it's contractors, engineers, building officials, architects, not adjusters, and that makes sense because we're talking about the useful life of a roof system. We're not talking about policy language, so it makes sense that it's not public adjusters or independent adjusters. It could be any other individual entity recognized by the insurers possessing the necessary expertise to do so, but they have to be authorized by the insurer and the policyholder has to pay for it. Unless that person that is sent out actually determines that there is at least five years of useful life left. But I got to tell you, based on my experience, that's a very difficult thing to do subjectively. It's it's a very opinion based system and there's lots of different ways to define a lot of different things. I'm not too thrilled with that. It does give it they're they're attempting to give policyholders some ability of having a roof that's more than fifteen years old. Which we're talking about roof systems that have warranties of thirty years or lifetime. Why would they not be able to have it at fifteen years old or older? What is the difference?
That was a question I wanted to ask you, which is, you know, if one of these, you know, authorized inspectors comes out and says, hey, this roof that's let's say it is fifteen years and a and a day old. This thing doesn't have five years of of life left. Well, could you then turn around and go to the manufacturer and say, hey, look, I've got this opinion that says your your product is no good. You know, I'm I'm making a warranty claim now and have them come out and look at it and perhaps give another opinion as to the roof's useful life.
It definitely doesn't specify a type of roof system. This is for residential structures, but it doesn't specify a type of system. So what if you've got a tile roof that's going to last, you know, sixty, seventy five years? And it's fifteen years old or older. It 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 just means that they can't refuse to renew or continue insuring them. Just for that one reason. But I I would assume that this is really specifically or mostly about asphalt shingle roofs. And there are parts of Florida where asphalt shingle roofs, just because of saltwater air or something along those lines, it breaks down really quickly. All of the high wind zone requirements, if you've got peel and stick down or ice and water over the entire deck, the heat buildup that is accumulating causes a lot of heat damage to it. These things break down really quickly in certain areas, but not necessarily. It doesn't have to do that. It it could be inland and it could have, you know, permeable felt, air permeable felt that allows breathing of the materials and still be with the high wind resistance. So I'm I don't understand why they did this. Anyway, all right. Any questions on that, guys? Hey, Clint Moore. Said neck tattoo.
Hey, next, good to see you, man.
So there was something about the roof deductible I think we missed, and it has to do with the insurer receiving proof of payment of the deductible.
Yep, so the carrier is only required to pay A C V or the actual cash value until the policyholder submits proof that they have, in fact, paid the roof deductible. And until that happens, they won't have to pay any of the replacement cost.
And it says a reasonable proof of payment, and it does specify certain ways that that could be, and it can be a loan document for that. The insurer may limit the claim payment as the roof to the actual cash value of the loss otherwise. So it's still they'd still have to pay the actual cash value.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. Is there anything other than the breach of contract that we should go over?
Perhaps attorney's fees.
Was that?
Real quick.
Yeah, let's get into that.
Okay, so there's three changes to attorney's fees. The most significant one is A O Bs. No more attorney's fees for A O Bs. Policyholders can still assign benefits except for the right to recover attorney's fees. So unfortunately, attorneys will no longer be allowed to recover those on behalf of assignees. The other the other thing was kind of a nothing burger is the multipliers. Basically creates a presumption that load star is the reasonable way to calculate attorney's fees and only in rare and exceptional circumstances with evidence that it was hard for the policyholder to hire competent counsel. Only in that circumstance will a multiplier be used or awarded. The last thing is carrier fees or defensive attorney fees. And S B seventy six created the the obligation for policyholders to file notices of intent to litigate. It's basically, you know, a notice that tells the carrier, you've got ten days to to try to work this out with us, or else we're gonna we're gonna file suit. If a plaintiff's attorney fails to file that notice of intent to litigate and the carrier obtains a dismissal without prejudice, then the policyholder's attorney is going to be the one who's on the the hook for those fees. That's malpractice to 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 not file that on a claim where it was required. And yeah, you don't you don't want to be on the receiving end of of paying defense attorney fees. Absolutely not.
No. And that's even without it being brought by an assignee. So I want to make that clear. So before it was if it was an assignee. And now it's everyone.
Yep.
So that's a that's a big deal.
It's a huge deal. It's a huge deal and it's we've already heard that these changes are not enough for the industry and I think that they're going to be coming after the ability to assign benefits in general, as well as the one way attorney's fee statute. So with with those two things gone, I mean, that's a complete overhaul of the the incentives in this industry.
Yeah.
So we got to watch out for that next year.
All right, so we're already talking about cases. Was there anything else?
Do you want to do breach of contract now or?
I think that's where we're at. Let me just swipe back through the rest of this. The insurance, is there anything you think we should go over about the insurer stability unit?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, this isn't really going to affect anybody's practice or anything out there, but it's good news for those of us in the industry. This creates what's called the property insurance stability unit. It will be under O I R, the Office of Insurance Regulation in Florida, which is a division of Department of Financial Services. This is going to create basically a lot of new data collection for for the state. And it will then be put into a report form and made public and presented to the legislature two times a year. And we're going to have a lot more information about about insurers' financial situation, why they're going insolvent. The the, you know, other just underlying information like number of policies, number of cancellations, premiums collected, all all this new data that we're going to be able to to use. Another thing I think is very important is, you know, we've had all these carriers going, you know, insolvent, leaving the state, all this stuff. Well, O I R, under this new with this new unit, is charged with preventing those insolvencies too. Not just investigating them, looking into what went wrong after it, but preventative measures to to stop this stuff from happening. And so I think that is a a huge win just for all the citizens and especially policyholders here in the state.
That's great. I didn't catch that part. That's cool.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things that's so frustrating when we're in Tallahassee, fighting against these these changes is that you get lawmakers who come up here and they say, oh, litigation's out of control, the bad faith, you know, cases are through the roof. The multipliers are draining insurance company profits. And then when they are followed up with with questions from other lawmakers or anyone, really, they don't have the data and they'll they'll they're free to admit that. And they don't they don't even feel bad. So why are we, why are we making all these huge changes if we don't know the underlying data that you know, that they're complaining about over? So I think that this is a really good thing.
That's fantastic. And and there's a few gems in here. The that unit gets to investigate if if complaints suggest a trend or or systemic issues that are done over multiple claims against multiple claimants, not isolated incidents. However, they can start an investigation if it has if there is any reason to believe that an insurer has engaged in and, meaning one unfair trade practice under part nine of chapter six twenty six. So even though they're looking for systemic issues, they can start an investigation over a single complaint that is able to show that there is reason to believe that they have violated one of the unfair claim settlement practices, which is awesome. Because sometimes just getting them to investigate is the hard part. That's been my experience in Georgia, where we've had a lot of this reporting with the complaint process, if the complaint is is not deemed to be a valid complaint, which most of them aren't, then then it's ignored, but we'd have to show a systemic issue, even if it is determined that they are violating any of the unfair practices on a single claim. That that could be huge.
Yeah.
That can make a huge difference.
One mistake and and that can trigger it.
And and this could, you know, some of the issues that we have is public adjusters is that we're we're seeing we see a lot of bad claims handling on the carrier side. And I'm not saying that public adjusters are immune to that. Obviously, there's a lot of public adjusters that have a lot of bad claims handling as well, but we see a lot of that. So when we're told that the insurance market is outrageous because of bad faith laws and 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 fee shifting and all this kind of stuff. And the amount of rampant claims and all that. Whether we a agree with it slightly or not, it feels wrong to us. And they're going to be able to go in now and really see what's going on behind the scenes so that we can negate some of the poorly written, clearly paid for articles that are out there talking about why things are opinion only, not necessarily the opinion of of Clint or Listen to this Bull or any other organization I belong to. Yeah, that's pretty cool.
Yeah.
Before we get to the big point, I've got a few questions in here that I thought were good. Super Dave says, can senior citizen discount coupons or military discount possibly be considered illegal for contractors? I would assume he's talking about the fact that they it would have to charge a deductible. It's not something that's written in this bill. But it is considered a a form of covering deductibles.
Okay. Well, then, yeah, I mean, I I would assume that, you know, any form of, well, really, the the rules just say you gotta you gotta say we can't pay this for you. In other words, like you're responsible for it. So I mean, if you've got some sort of a discount on on your deductible, I don't think that matters as long as, you know, you're the one paying it.
It can't be a discount on on the deductible necessarily. If they give if you give a discount on the roof, that's great, but the amount of loss that's incurred by the policyholder is then reduced. So the deductible stays the same. And and that's really how that ends up being applied in other states anyway.
Gotcha. I see what you mean.
So I'm not an attorney, but I I think it would be deemed that way, or at least construed as as a reasonably construed as as a way of covering deductibles if you if you don't charge a full amount on this. Can a contract between the public adjuster or attorney and the insured take the place of an assignment of benefits?
So there I know that specifically in the bill, it says that public adjuster fees are not they're not an assignment of benefits, because it's coming out of your, it's coming out of your indemnity. Attorney, I think, would be the same thing if you're involved at the at the claim stage. I mean, that's that's essentially.
Benefits are still assigned to the policyholder. It's it's not going somewhere else. Would a maybe he's asking about like a power of attorney?
Well, when we were going over the language, it said, really, anyway, these rights are acquired, not just a specific assignment benefits. So if you try to get creative and say, well, we're not going to title this an assignment of benefits, but it's going to do the exact same thing. That catchall in the bill. I think that's going to snag you. And so, no, you 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 don't want to try and get around it by doing a different type of agreement that accomplishes the same thing.
I'm going to read that portion of it, just so you guys are aware. This is a this is on online's eleven fifty nine through eleven sixty three. It defines assignment agreement means any instrument by which post-loss benefits under a residential property insurance policy or commercial property insurance policy as that term is defined in section blah are assigned or transferred or acquired in any manner in whole or in part to or from a person providing services, including not limited to inspecting all this stuff that a contractor would perform. The term does not include fees collected by a public adjuster. Yeah, you're right. It it's catchall situation, assign or transfer or acquired in any manner in whole or in part to or from a person. Now, I had to look up the word person. Person in the state of Florida would include corporations and and companies and stuff. If they're talking about like what you would think of as a person, like a human individual, they would call that a natural person. So by saying a person, they they mean any entity, basically. Okay. See if there's any more questions on that, and then we'll get to the big dollar item that I think is the biggest change on this.
Okay.
I'm not gonna, I don't think we should answer questions about why someone would do something. We don't have the ability to really talk about that. Marketing pay by gift, there's a lot of questions about how deductibles might be covered. I'm going to post up one of these other questions. What about marketing pay by gift card rebate upgrade? I'm going to post up one of these other questions. Uh, what about marketing paid by gift card rebate upgrades or 10 and I check for senior citizens, military referrals, ad responses, et cetera? I think it all falls under the exact same issue. If you give the person a discount on the roof, then that becomes their incurred amount. And the incurred amount is what the policy ends up paying. So unless the ACV amount that was applied is more than what your discount is, you're not going to be able to really benefit a policyholder by giving these things. And it could be considered a form of, uh, covering the deductible. So.
Yeah, I would watch out for that. I mean, that is exactly like gift cards, rebates, all that stuff is exactly what the lawmakers were trying to go after. Uh, it doesn't necessarily have to be, we'll, we'll give you a cash, you know, or we'll, we'll give a line item discount. Any of that stuff is, is going to be broadly covered, um, by the statute. So yeah, I wouldn't, I would not mess with any of that.
Everybody's got questions about deductibles. I think I might have to do a, a whole video about deductibles later on. I didn't realize there was that many questions on that kind of a thing. We'll do a video on that later on. Let's go ahead and continue and get to the real big ticket item on this bill is the, um, breach of contract language. So I'll let you take it away on that.
Sure. So, uh, this has to deal with, uh, civil remedy notices and, um, how to pursue a bad faith claim in Florida. Prior to this law, um, there was a case called Camarada versus State Farm. And in that case, essentially what happened was, uh, State Farm underpaid a claim. The, um, the insured, uh, filed a CRN or civil remedy notice. The carrier invoked appraisal. The appraisal went in the insurance favor and coverage was found and, uh, the damages were established and the damages were above that, what the, uh, uh, carrier had estimated or offered. Um, and so because of that, uh, the court said, hey, look, you have proved that, um, the carrier's liability for coverage and for damages. And so now your bad faith claim is right. You don't have to prove that they necessarily breached the insurance contract. So that was the Camarada case, and we believe that this was probably done in response to that. Now, now the insured has to, has to prove that the carrier breached the insurance contract. How are you going to do that? The only way that I can, that I really see is if, you know, if we're, if we're specifically putting a, a prevailing in a bad faith contingent upon a breach of contract claim is to either go to trial on your underlying breach of contract case on the claim and win and get a judgment, or have the carrier admit that it, in fact, you know, breached the contract as a part of your settlement.
Yeah, I mean, we kinda did.
Yeah. Good luck getting them to admit that and teeing your bad faith case up for you.
Yeah. Uh, so this is, this is how litigation works in most other states. If you don't have the breach of contract, uh, most of the unfair claim settlement practices are considered your, your bad faith type items. And in most other states, there's no private cause of action for those items. So in most other states, you have to file suit. And, uh, for breach of contract, you might end up getting bad faith, uh, tacked on at the end. Or you could add it to your suit a, as part of the options. And then it's up to judge and jury during a trial to determine if there's bad faith. You can't sue directly for those, for those things. So this is very similar to how things work in other states. Most everything is settled outside of court without the attorney's fees paid as part of the settlement agreements. They, does happen sometimes when your case is super solid and theirs is super weak and they recognize it and they don't actually want to go to trial. They, they might end up paying, uh, reasonable attorney's fees, or at least it might become a negotiable thing. But it's not automatic. So you'd have to prove it. In order to do that, you'd have to have it at trial.
Yeah, I know. I think that there's probably going to be some people who try to say that, hey, once we've, once we've proven through appraisal that, uh, this was covered and it was covered above that, that constitutes the breach of contract, but, you know, that, that's going to have to be.
There's an argument there.
Yeah, there's certainly, there certainly is. That's where that case law came from. And, you know, proving that a carrier breached the contract doesn't necessarily mean you, you have to sue them to do that. You know, if, if you provide other evidence during the, during the claim.
Are there any other, um, is there any, um, exclusions to that scenarios where that wouldn't apply or be necessary?
So yeah, the, the law specifically focused on, um, 624.155 subsection 1B. So there's three little subheadings under, under that section, but there's also, uh, subsection 1A, which is not included in this. You know, you're typically not going to deal with that kind of stuff as an adjuster, uh, attorney or contractor. It usually has to do you know, broader things like misrepresentations in advertising of the policy itself. Also telling the public it does one thing when it actually does another.
Trade practices.
Yeah, yeah, it's going to be harder to, for individual claims.
Well, I think that that is going to have a very large effect on Florida. There's no way it doesn't. It's definitely going to change the way, uh, litigation is pursued here. When does that go into effect?
That goes into effect, I believe, immediately.
Is it for policies that are written or renewed after that date or claims that are, uh, reported after that date?
Well, uh, there's nothing in here that actually says that it is in fact retroactive. So I guess a carrier could kind of make that argument, but I would say that this is, you know, affecting substantive rights. And so it wouldn't be able to be applied retroactively.
So what if you file a claim next year for a loss that happened last year? So there's a two-year gap and the bill changed everything in the middle. But you filed a claim after that point. Because you filed the claim at that point, then it would fall under these rules? Or does the law state matter, you think? It really isn't clear in there.
So my, my, yeah, my position, you know, as, as a policyholder advocate is going to be that whatever was in effect at the time that contract was executed is what should, should apply. You know, um,
Contract. So if, if the policy is renewed, it's not, and it's not a new executed contract every year. It's the same policy.
Uh, not necessarily, no.
If they change the policy number, there's some different, uh, requirements for them. The outside of that, all the renewal documents, if they're changing anything, it's, it's almost like an endorsement where they, they have to add an endorsement to change the policy language.
Okay.
Policy is the original contract. They're just making edits to it along the way. It's not a new policy every time.
True.
So yeah, that'd be interesting to see how that ends up playing out.
Yeah, I, I, again, I would, my position would be it, whatever was in effect at the time it was executed, that's what applies. You know, unless of course it, you know, benefits the policyholder, at which point you say, well, you know, any sort of ambiguity is going to go in their favor.
Yeah. So there is a decent question. Who wins from the new laws? Curs only? I get they're implying property owners won't have as many or as high of increases in premiums. But is that probable, provable or promised in writing?
Short answer, no. There is no promise of, uh, reductions in, in rates or premiums really, other than the RAP program.
RAP program, if, if participants in the RAP program do have to have policy discounts associated with it. But it just says reasonable and we don't know who's making that call.
Yeah, and exactly. We all know what it's gonna, what, how much it's gonna be or, uh, when it's gonna, you know, how long that necessarily is going to take effect. It's the RAP program only lasts a year as far as your participation as a carrier. So, you know, that could change right after that year.
Are they not required to maintain that membership?
No, uh, you only have to participate for one year. And if you're not qualified, then, um, if you're like in an unsound financial condition, you're not allowed to participate.
Right.
But yeah, if you're required to participate for a year, um, in the program.
I didn't catch that part either. So outside of a year, does it benefit the carrier to continue participating in the program? Where the rates come down as for that year, then it's go right back up at the end of it. It'd be hard to raise the rates again and suddenly. But in, in, in a real sense, if you, if you were to think about that RAP program as the lawmakers attempt to force them to reduce their rates because of the laws that they just passed. If you just looked at it as that, then maybe there is a full attempt to actually bring down the rates purposefully. Probably, we don't know by how much, but at least some, um, in response to a portion of this bill. And because of the way the rest of the bill is written, if, if the insurers were right and the rates are so high because of the rampant litigation and all that kind of crap, then it should never have to come back up and the rates should be, continue to go down. If they were wrong and it was all just fluey, fooey bullcrap, bullshit. It's all bull. Then, uh, then I bet we start seeing other reasons why the rates have to go up year after year and, and, and let the, the department, uh, make that call.
Yeah, I, I sat in on a, uh, on a call with Demotag recently, and a lot of the people on that call were saying, don't expect rates to go down for at least 18 months. They were saying it is irresponsible to tell consumers and policyholders that rates are going to go down as a result of this litigation or of legislation, rather. So, uh, yeah, I mean, I, if, if you're a policyholder out there, um, or an advocate for one of them.
You're responsible.
Yeah, don't, don't expect this to, uh, to turn around and, and solve the problem. Not only that, if, if we're not supposed to see effects for 18 months, we're going to have two more sessions before then, uh, plus we could have more special sessions if, you know, if called. Uh, so something tells me that we're not going to go back next year and they're just going to be, you know, radio silence on insurance matters. You know, we're, we're going to be finding new changes again for the next two sessions before allegedly, based on the carrier's, uh, representatives, we're going to see these changes.
There were a ton of organizations that were involved in attempting to make changes to this bill or, or propose changes to it, or just try to affect this in a positive manner. None of those proposed changes were accepted. Um, and, and they, they just, they passed it. They just passed it. And then it was passed immediately by, uh, did it start at the House or the Senate? I don't remember. Either one, it, it passed the, the opposing, uh, side and then governor signed it. I mean, within a matter of days. So that kind of thing can happen.
Absolutely.
And this is just Florida. You don't typically have federal laws regarding insurance claims because insurance is different from one state to the next. So now this is just for the Florida, uh, special session that occurred. But I appreciate your time on this Clint and helping us understand it a little bit more. If you uncover anything new, I'd love for you to jump back on with us. And, and yeah, we'll, we'll keep updated on everything.
All right, great. Thanks for having me, Matt. I appreciate it. Big fan of Listen to this Bull and everything else that you do.
Should we pretend that we're going to walk away from each other and shake each other's hands right now? Thanks for being here.
All right, bye. See you guys.